Morning everyone.
Morning.
We need approval of the agenda please.
Motion to approve it.
There's a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are you ready to change?
No.
Motion here, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve with one word on the leader under my committee report, same word for.
Oh, second.
There's a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I agree, carries. Item number one is secondary roads we have back here with the utilities.
Morning.
Good morning.
I do. So the city of Arcadia is putting in new water main throughout parts of town. I don't know the extent of the full project, but I do know they're crossing M sixty-eight in a couple of locations. As you've seen on the drawings or the maps that I attached, we are asking them to case the water main in the areas where they're going underneath the pavement. There is some water services that will go across our road as well. We're not asking them to case those, just trying to stay consistent with what we're doing. So, what we've done in the past. So, but it is, it is the city's responsibility, those utilities, if something would happen to those and would damage the road, they're the ones that are responsible for putting things back. So, either way, whether it's cased or not. So, and that's been communicated to them, so they're, everyone's on the same page. So.
So the only thing that's on that map is those the main.
Correct, correct. The services don't show up on that map.
So how many services?
Um, I don't think a lot of them. I think there's like maybe three or four.
But did they provide you enough those?
They did not. They did not.
I would ask that they do that when you get down from the truck.
I sure can. I'm sure we can get the whole ass bill plans of those. I think, I know the location, I think for most of them are, are the southern areas that go across because the water mains on the west side of the road and serving some of those properties on the east side, going north of the co-ock.
Utilize some of the old names. So then there's basically the kind of upside or could they be to give more?
Capacity. Mike, I think that's what it is. It's more its capacity and getting things looped for the new tower, I believe. And so they have, that they've installed. So I don't know the rest of the details on that for sure, but.
One thing about it, they're doing a lot of it by boring.
They are. They are. So.
Is that the only utility comment?
That's all I want.
I will make a motion to approve.
There's a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
Thank you.
Happy them.
We don't have anything else.
Thanks, Zach.
Thank you.
Just pressing.
There's something in gentleman.
They must have them. You know why?
I heard an audio visual discussion. Obviously, everybody on the board knows where we'll be moving into our new meeting and within the next three weeks. So there is some final things that we need to have for you and that would be our audio for around where we will be sitting. And then also a visual podium where yes speakers can come and the visual will show exactly what they're presenting to you. So that will be much. Documenting.
So thank you very much, Steph, for introducing that. So the board had asked me to go get a quote to do this conference room. We're hoping, like you said, to get a document camera, be able to have good view on the people in the audience and obviously the board as well. I'm bringing to you a couple of quotes here. We had tried to get three, but we're still waiting on the other one to get back to us. So we have two today just to get this done. The system that we were trying to kind of pair was another one we were using as an example with the city. And most of the equipment there is this quote that says Vadio on it. It's a quote seven, two, three, eight, zero. That's matching most of that equipment, having that document camera where if somebody has like a piece of paper and at the podium, you guys have a good visual of it. And the audience will as well up in the TV. Another thing, it has the speakers that come with it. So you have the audio on the ceiling. And then the mics on the desk would be gooseneck mics where you can mute them. So you don't have a mic up in your face, but you can mute it and you know you're muted because it gives you a visual of that.
Sort of those mics on the whole time where you have the six push buttons each time you talk?
We've got a mute button. So it's on or off. So if you mute it, then it won't do anything until you unmute it. So that way kind of everybody knows who's talking, you know, like Scott said, you come up to the mic like this and you have everybody's attention at that point. The other quote was to use the team's room. This is just like a prefab kit that this company sells through called Gay Link. That's more like a drop-in system. Everything's etherneted in, but it doesn't have as many frills as the other one. Obviously, that's a little more expensive. It doesn't have the document camera. It only has one soundboard, two soundbars and that's when the front and back of the room. But yeah, it's more of a simple room for the second quote. Does anybody have any questions about this?
I do. As an IT guy, kind of got to trust your opinion here because I don't know. What, what do you recommend on these two?
Personally, I would go with that Vadio system. I think it's going to check mark all the things that you guys are wanting more so. Where the Yay Link is more of just if we want to go the cheap route and like just get something done. I mean, that's what I would suggest.
How close is this to like the city of Carols?
So the, the Vadio system that you're looking at from the, for the city of Carroll is actually one I made up myself. I sat down, drew up a diagram of the city of Carols. I simplified it so it actually fit in our conference room and tore out some stuff. So because we didn't need everything they had. But this was the comparable quote for that city of Carroll system was this Vadio one here.
And you've been there too.
The city hall.
Okay, yeah.
In their back room.
Yeah. They have a very nice setup.
It is. It's very audience friendly.
Audience friendly, yeah.
User friendly for the people.
So these all controls to be back in our room or under the podium?
So right now, like everything would be back at, we have like a data room, you know, when you first walk in there. That would be kind of where I set. I can control the cameras, everything that's on the screen during the live meeting. I can also do that remotely as well. Steph and I kind of talked, maybe in the future, we could add like just a control panel on the desk where if somebody wasn't there, then she could start the meeting and do things just like from the the main point there.
The city of Carroll has a meeting right now. It's just in the back room that runs the cameras.
And I don't think we need that by any means. I just, so probably even there are walking through the boardroom. I just haven't mentioned the ultimate going forward, just simply training one or two of us so that if somebody, for instance, if he has to be gone, we can start, stop, just kind of like what we did with the system. And not just me, have somebody else's work. Obviously, we left it and then we'll be here forever.
Yep.
Well, it could be even some of the staff. They're using it for some other sort of meeting.
Yeah, I mean, like them using it for the voting stuff. I mean, they have to train voters. That's a good place for them to sit. So.
Or they have a safety meeting in there or something.
Yep.
When we did this, I said this room could be utilized for other things, not just for boards. The board's going to have priority.
No, I mean, just like last time, we, we use that room for multiple things, but yeah.
And the funds are there. Cheap car, but.
And you guys budgeted for outpost ones of the units?
I was thinking budgeted for twenty-five thousand.
I don't remember if it was twenty or thirty. So, yeah.
But what's?
This is under.
And we still have, and then just throwing a number out there. So this is exactly one hundred and ninety thousand reserves from this project. So.
And honestly, well, all things considered, this is cheap compared to probably what other people paid. I mean, I think Scott.
You did see the, what the city paid.
Yeah. Yes, and they also have the live TV stuff too. So I mean, but yeah. Kind of going right for the stuff. And this is equipment only. Obviously, this is, I'm going to do all the labor and stuff like that. So.
So it'll look like our local channels pay able to feed off this then or?
No.
They'd have such a.
Yeah, that, that's, that's kind of like something to do with the city. It's not really something we can delve into. So, you know, we re-broadcast on YouTube now. They can steal that streaming time they want. So.
And so they exorcise that.
Yeah, that's kind of what they do now. Work. That one right there.
So can we make a decision on this though?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to approve.
You said that these people are doing more of the work themselves or?
He's waiting on that quote.
Going on four weeks.
And we're getting out of the water. I think we need to do something.
I think that's advantageous for us to utilize what we have in also. It would be nice to have a free story to tell. But yeah, so it's just kind of.
Not sorry, spring out of the bus. You come back with us five times in the last two days.
Yeah.
Know today was meeting day, decision day.
And worse could, like, it's not like I couldn't ask them to help. They're pretty well versed in all this stuff and even, you know, talked about ordering a lot of the similar equipment in their flow when they're developing it. But.
Do a great job, but.
So.
Okay, back to idea? I'll make a motion to approve Dale's proposal seventy-two, three, eighty for eighteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents.
There's a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
It's just going to cover the.
Yeah.
Yes. That's what I want.
I'm with you. My name's on it. Thanks, guys.
All right, item number three is to approve payables and with that, the payables currently are at four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, seventy-four dollars and fifty cents. But we need to add a public health monitor of two hundred and seventy dollars in terms of our resources. Is there any questions on the payables? There's a motion in a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Item number four is a merit access property opportunity. We're going to have Jason come speak to us. Hey.
Morning, Jason.
Good morning. All right. What I want to talk about real quick is merit access. I'm going to pass these around. So we look at the first page. So merit access is labeled there. This is from the county GIS site. So the hashtag area there is merit access. So the property around merit access was owned by Lueta King, who has since passed on and all of her property has gone to her grandkids. So as part of merit access, there's that blue box that's not connected to the park. That is actually county property. It sits out there in the middle of their pasture. They pasture that all around. All around there and actually through there. So in changing the deeds over to the grandkids, they noticed that this little chunk out here in the middle of their pasture was actually Carroll County property. So Jeff Poots is helping land manage this ground for the grandkids and trying to figure all this stuff out with them. So what, he came to a couple conservation board meetings now. What they would like to do to clean their, their property up and kind of get that county property out of the middle of their pasture. Since we don't actually, it doesn't connect to merit access. We don't have access to it. There's no public access to it. So what they would like is for the county basically other one, we're, we are. You know, and this merit access was purchased in nineteen sixty-one. So over the years, I mean, who knows what, I guess, without going back and looking where the river was back in nineteen sixty-one, if it had a different path back then, I don't know, but.
Was merit purchased then or was it deeded to us, you know?
Yeah, I guess I don't know exactly if it was purchased or deeded. It was, well, I'm sure it was purchased from the merit family. But you know, as far as how much, I have no idea if or if it was just more of a donation kind of thing. A lot of these areas were kind of donated as far as, you know, conservation areas, wildlife areas. Nope, that's not. So so what they would like to do is to clean, to clean up, basically having a piece of county property on the middle of their pasture and to clean that up. They would like the county to consider deeding that blue box, basically which is including the river. It's roughly nine acres. The land would be roughly seven acres, seven and a half acres. And in exchange, there's the red box on top on the north end of the property. They would do a ninety-nine year lease for a dollar a year, just a nominal fee. Do a lease on that because right now that the boundary of merit access on the north goes right through the middle of that timber and it's, it's a swampy timber. It's almost impossible to keep a boundary through there because it floods and it's like such a swamp area. So basically the property line would move out to the edge of that timber, making the north end a lot more user friendly as far as what's, you know, what's huntable, what's not huntable. So it wouldn't be actual county ownership. It would be a ninety-nine year lease. We would still manage it like we do other areas. We lose. I guess a benefit to that would would stay on the tax roll.
So these, I don't know. We don't own that much property. We're just all leased then, right?
Merit access, we own.
We own all this.
Yeah.
And that. And right here's a piece that isn't.
We don't own this.
No, no, no. So it's all, all king ground around that, that yellow box or that blue box. Yep, yep.
Well, I just.
So that's, that's their, their request that would, like I said, we don't do anything, you know, with that area in the blue box. We don't have access to it, you know, it's not connected to the park. It floods, so we've never really been able to maintain a fence in there. So for years, it's just kind of, it's been existing, but we don't as far as wildlife habitat or anything like that, it truly have no value unless it is connected to the park, which it's really not. Actually, that piece on the north end would be a lot more valuable. It would define that north boundary a lot better and give us more hunting access up on that north end. So that's the first, the first part of this. Second part, on the second page, what they want to do, and Jeff Poots is real big into conservation. So what they want to do is go in and restore the river oxbows and basically what a river oxbow is, is a, an old channel of the river or a place that when the river floods fills with water. So the blue areas, they want to build a little pond on the south end, right? It's kind of there in that head corner of that blue box. And then they're going to restore those old river oxbows. They're working with the US Fish and Wildlife Service and the NRCS office to restore these river oxbows. They've got a plan in place. It's about a five hundred thousand dollar project. That's going to be funded through US Fish and Wildlife Service and the NRCS. So they're going to basically restore those river oxbows on these properties. And then ultimately what we would want to do or what they would want us to do is basically similar to that red hashed area, we would basically the county would lease that ground to manage those river oxbows as, you know, public hunting, public access, which would be a really cool cool area for waterfowl, waterfowl hunting, different things like that. But a little different habitat for us out there. And basically we would again sign a lease for ninety-nine years on that property. Once the river oxbows are constructed, that'll probably be a two or three year. Yeah. So, yeah, so there's two artesian wells. They're going to build a pond as part of this, a small three, four acre pond that those artesian wells will fill. And then once the ponds full, it'll flow out into these oxbows. And the oxbows help when the river floods, those areas also flood, but they help hold water back as the river goes down. So it, you know, it's a little bit of a flood mitigation thing too, but creates really neat wildlife habitat. I've seen a couple of these done with US Fish and Wildlife Service projects in other counties. I guess the benefit to this is there would be no, no expense to the county to build them. US Fish and Wildlife Service and NRCS are going to basically fund the bill to do that. It's just down the road, what the conservation board would want is management release of that ground, which would be the green hashed areas to manage those appropriately. And that's kind of what they want to, because they don't have no experience managing that kind of stuff. So basically it would be open to public hunting, public access at that point.
So the lease ground.
Lease ground. So it'd remain on the tax roll and all that stuff. And one thing the conservation board discussed was since these oxbows aren't built yet, they do have a plan or they're finalizing the plans on those. Currently that pasture land is being rented. The conservation board would want a contract with, with them. Or the county would request to have a contract with them that states that yes, the conservation board will lease this in the future. Not more than ten years down the road because they don't want it to drag out and you know, you can lease it, but it might not be for twenty-five years or something. Like I said, the oxbow work will probably take a couple, three years to get done and established. But they do have a lease for the pasture land right now. So we'd have to work with that. With the conservation board would like to have a contract in place that yes, this is going to happen. And yes, this is going to happen within ten years. So that's kind of what we're looking at.
And my assumption, or I'm assuming, I think that the oxbow work is already, the paperwork's already in place for the red area, right?
Yes.
That's what he made it sound like. So that we're going to have an oxbow restoration there in that red one right away.
Yep.
The initial phase of it. That's before the others, I think, right?
Yeah, they're going to start here and then work down there.
Yeah.
So, and I know the question is, so basically you would be deeding this blue box to the King family or the King family trust or whatever it's in. And then getting this red hashed area in return only for a lease. So I mean, I know there's some maybe some question there. That was one of the questions my conservation board brought up as well, but they don't want to sell this. Just they want to keep it up, keep the property ownership in the King family, but they would do a ninety-nine year lease, like I said, just for a dollar a year kind of thing. So.
When I met, when I met with Jason, we discussed this, that was my only concern was going from owning to leasing, but all in all, this is a win-win for, for everybody, for the public to be able to have this access to this kind of outdoor wildlife is phenomenal. And then, you know, we're seeing that where we actually have access to that land and merit.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
How many acres was it at again?
They were about acre for acre. They were both about nine acres. This was nine acres. The big box was nine acres, but that includes that little piece of river. This was right at nine acres. So it's and like I said, this blue box, you know, we as, as a conservation board don't utilize that for anything. It's not part of or connected to. What's that?
You can't even order a manager. That's asked to get two.
Right.
That's kind of how they, how it's all, you know, about is someone hunting, trying to get in there to hunt it.
Yeah. So that would clear up that that issue to somebody trying to, because the only access to it is across private ground. So basically the guy that was walking in there and tried to hunt was walking across private ground. So unless you don't take the, so. Well, that's the question.
County attorney hasn't weighed in on me?
No, because I wanted to run it down. You guys see what your thoughts were. And I know the county attorney likes, since it is a property, a property issue, it is a, you know, a county property issue, not a conservation sort of property. So it would have to be, have to be a request.
I think it's a win-win really. When you you've got a deadlocked property that ruins all the county.
Right. You know, it'd be different if it was actually part of merit access that, you know.
Along the road or something.
Yeah, something that we utilize.
But I mean, the other thing is what's what they're doing there is they're going to, and I, I agree, you need to have a contract as you're going to do this. But they're going to spend all this money and it's a win-win.
Yeah. Oh, it'll be, it'll be a neat area. Cause I've seen.
They're not going to spend no money. The government is.
Well, I mean.
But yeah, they're going to get the deal done.
But it's no, no cost on the county's part.
Right.
But we're, we're giving up nine, we're getting nine usable and opportunity at another hundred some.
Yeah.
Down the road. I think it'll be a good long-term deal.
So do you need a motion?
So, so this, well, at least this pasture now, what's going to, they're going to stay pasture or?
It'll stay pasture until they get the oxbow work done. And then that's where we wanted a contract in place that my board didn't want to drag it out for more than ten years.
How many acres is that pasture?
Uh, I didn't figure that out. I'm guessing around forty, forty, forty-five. Somewhere. Maybe fifty.
One second.
That's probably the only downside. I see it's there's property that could be utilized or something.
Yeah.
It's hard, it's hard to find it on X because it's it's split up different ways.
Yeah, it wouldn't be.
That's out left corners. Twenty-two minus nine. That field's nine acres. And her, the, there's so many lines through there.
Yeah, I know what you mean.
You'd have to add them all up. I mean.
I can, I can figure. Yeah.
I, I think.
So and they, they, they kind of want the conservation board involved just because, you know, we have the resources and the knowledge to manage something like that. Whereas once they don't want to see it, you know, those oxbows built and all this habitat created and then nobody to take care of it. So and there is, you know, not that there will be a lot of management to it, but it, it is a win for, I think, for us as it gives us a lot of usable habitat, usable park ground, so to speak. And, and we will manage the, you know, manage it as such. Whereas if they just come in and build these oxbows and it's just left to go because, you know, if the grandkids don't want to manage it or take care of it, then you hate to see all that work go to at least go to, go to waste, so to speak. Because it's going to, you know, it's not that it's going to take a lot of work, but you know, there's things just like weed control and different things and establishment of native grasses and stuff takes a while and then bring it off and different things. So there's a little work to it, but nothing comes out of our realm of what we do. So. So since it's county property, that's why I'm, you know, bringing it to you guys and seeing what, what your thoughts are. And obviously it'll need to discuss that with the county attorney and see what.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm raging with some board.
I think you move ahead with finding a contract with them. Trying to get something figured out.
Yeah, really, I mean, what they want to start with is the blue box and the red, you know, getting those two figured out. And then you'll sign, you know, draw a contract up for the rest of that deed.
So is that Jeff Poots' contract and that for the board rules and stuff?
Yeah, he'll, he'll draw, he'll draw up some sort of a contract with his attorneys draw up some sort of a contract. The only thing I think we would have to on our end would be the quick lane deed for that, deeding that over to him. Well, they would draw a lease agree enough for that, which it's.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm excited. We'll be going to some public hearing.
Build trip, kids, we talk.
Thank thirty. But in open public hearing, because we are. Went through these with us, does anybody have any questions? I can go through line item by line item if you would like. Um, from expenditures, general, basically a conservation CBL training, three thousand conservation GW. Be dumpsters, two thousand conservation I cap deductible, ten thousand. IT supplies for move three thousand, IT internet fees three hundred. IT move help server upgrade three thousand five hundred. Juvenile legal and court related services, seven thousand juveniles detention, four thousand. Township trustee salary five hundred, supervisor HR fee one thousand, three thousand one hundred dollars. Um, and then an inspection for two hundred dollars, medical examiner ten thousand. So the general basic total would be forty-six thousand six hundred. Um, excess of revenues and other sources, over, under expenditures and other uses. So it's a surplus, that's a surplus. Okay, the deduct is the eight thousand four hundred and ninety dollars. From general supplemental, the. Property insurance is two hundred and fifty-one dollars, rural services, we had the certification comp time payout. Uh, six thousand four hundred, and secondary roads. So the total expenditure is fifty-three thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars. And revenue would be eight thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars. And did you guys receive any? Comments concerns?
Nope.
Or I can close the publication at nine thirty-two. Move on to item number six, what would be to approve appropriations resolution? There's a motion and a second roll call.
Anderson.
Yes.
Miners.
Yes.
Housman.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Preparation resolution approved. Item number seven, while we're passing around the preparation resolutions, Sarah was the GIS and E and Z and passport update.
How are you guys today? Good, happy Monday. Okay, second to my. Okay, sorry, I didn't wanna interrupt. Uh, I sent my quarterly report last week to Courtney, I'm sure you guys have it in front of you. Um, passports have maintained steady, uh, processed our splits, you know, as if that's or give some to me, I processed them. Attended magic in Omaha, which is the mid-America GIS, uh. Thing that happens every two years, um, met people from, you know, Kansas, Oklahoma. Um, saw what they're doing in their, in their governments and their states, and I'm excited to bring some of that hopefully back here.
That, on the passports, what is your, what have you been averaging, you know, like last quarter, you remember?
Um, I could go back, I averaged, I think, fifty-seven or sixty passports a month. Um, last, last year in twenty-three. Uh, January, February, March were our highest passports of the year, and I think that's because we had a big public push, you know, we moved upstairs. Um, there was a lot kind of on the radio, on the Facebook, a lot shared, so I think that kind of brought it to the forefront of people's minds. Um, but this is pretty average for the last uh, two quarters of twenty-three, so. Yep, no problem, that's a good question, I should have brought that, I'm sorry, and. I had some customers, um, local people in the area asked me to print some maps of their farms for them, so that was a nice project with them. Worked with cities, they wanted new maps in their offices. Uh, as we know, in March, our map, what we're currently using for GIS, like. The third-party services are discontinued, um, so in July, we kind of went through that thing with Sidwell, where we're gonna be moving. Everything to the pro, um, so I've been working with all my data and my maps to try to get everything done before that July changeover. Um, so working really closely with Sidwell to get all of that knocked out. Uh, upcoming, we've got I tag in June, I have a monthly NG nine-one-one meeting. GIS support group meetings where we help the newbies in the state, if they have any questions, that's just once a month, if they have any questions. Um, along with that NG nine-one-one, we did meet our goals every quarter, so we will get that three thousand dollar. Check for the first quarter. Ongoing things are pretty normal. Zoning, we did the comprehensive plan monthly meetings, it is currently out for public opinion, if you haven't seen that survey, please let me know, I will share it. We got ten building permits, four of those were homes, um, for that first quarter of the year. Just talking in conversations with other counties about ordinances and if we need to revamp any of ours going forward as, you know, counties change. Um, and then we have our annual zoning conference in, into this month.
Question on that ordinance, because obviously we've been trying to kind of update those, and we wanna re-ratify officials to do that every year, every, every five years. Um, have you had a lot of feedback on that, is there some zoning thing we need to pay attention to?
Um, some things that I was asked about, so, um, from solar companies was BES, currently we don't have any BES. Ordinances, and it's a battery electric storage system for solar farms. Johnson County, I reached out to Johnson County zoning, um, asking them about theirs, they have it in their ordinance. Um, we're gonna talk more at Cozo in person, I have a list of questions I wanna ask him, Boone County is currently looking at adding BES. Um, but no county that I know of in Iowa has it right now, Johnson has it in their ordinance, but they don't have any systems right now. So I'm looking forward to having those conversations and getting all those questions an- answered, so. That's one of the big things, um, and then, uh, the wind towers, the heights, you know, we have a ordinance and a height. Requirement, they can't go any higher, um, some of those counties have changed, some of them are not, I just, I kind of wanna go through everything with the other zoning. Officials in the state.
We have a lot of ordinances on solar farms, as like these big ones are trying to come in.
We have ordinances that they have to be approved through the Board of Adjustment, um, but as far as size, we really don't have a size thing, and I think that's something. Um, all of our things do have setbacks, so off the road, you're supposed to be sixty foot, twenty foot off of each, you know, side, you know, for building, those are kind of our. In our zoning regulations, so.
Those are not changing in the new comprehensive plan.
So, those are.
It's just good to look at before, like the big ones.
Yeah.
Will you keep us, um, informed after you have your proposal?
Yeah, absolutely.
See what they say, cuz I know going forward, we're really gonna hone in on these ordinances before we have to start a new budget season.
Yeah.
Some things and items that we wanna get up to date, so.
Yep, that's one thing I really wanna look at as these questions come in, I, I wanna make sure our zoning, you know, is where it needs to be.
Anybody have any more questions for Sarah? Thank you, and if anybody wants, um, she does hand in their time sheets and everything to me. So if anybody ever wants that, just request it and I can send it over.
Any motion for this?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is to discuss the way handbook, I know we don't have. So, they need to briefly, and then bring it back up next. There was no bump on this, um, it stemmed from. The action log that we had started, saying I've done a spreadsheet, thank you, Sarah, for doing that. The Kira County action log, and, and I did go through this yesterday, and. You know, we have touched base on quite a bit of these things, uh, but the way handbook was one of them, and we also have. Uh, HR as well to kind of discuss this, I don't think we're looking to overhaul, overhaul the handbook, just to take a look at it, this is something I'd like to do yearly. So, was there any? Questions, highlights? I know there was. Question last week, Nikki brought up about. Pay out, correct?
Yeah.
What was the question?
I was worried about, uh, when you retire. We've got a few people to chat about that, I was paying out all your.
Sick time.
Sick time, your. Yeah, sick leave, or no, sick time, wasn't it? Let's pay sixteen, seventeen, what was that?
If you go for insurance, correct?
If, if you're maxed out on sick time and have had fifteen years of service. You can turn in your sick time and get a free health insurance.
But which happens, there's a lot of people when they're sixty-four retire, so they get that for you, no, if they got fifty.
End with yeah, yeah.
And I always look at it as sick time accumulated, it's fine, because it gives you. Benefit whenever there is a catastrophe that you're long-term. And I'm not, uh, one thing I've noticed in here is, you know, you. You don't get any vacation plan when you're five, four, and I see, you know, there's some employment hours starting things that are. Are not giving some vacation quicker just to get people to apply, I don't know that we're in that position yet, but.
I would only feel that way if we weren't getting people to apply, I feel like all of our jobs are.
But I, I just brought it up, cuz I see that as what some people are doing.
One thing I would like to discuss at some point is doing more of a, um, board supervisor eval. On people that report to the board of supervisors, so we have some department heads, it would be nice to do an evaluation. Yearly just over a department and kind of get a real grasp of how things are going. I think that would be a good added bonus if we did that. Obviously, it wouldn't be based on pay structure, because that gets.
Yeah, I saw that it would be a merit-based performance review, but.
More or less having good open communication with the staff and. Cause I know at some point on our action log, we had discussed a time clock, well. Time clocks are great, but when you only truly have four people that directly report to the board of supervisors. It's coming out worth what it would cost to do a time clock. Because basically, all your employees handed in, but you and Amy oversee that, so we trust that you're doing your job and. The elected officials, all their staff report to their elected officials, so. That was my two cents.
Sick time, you know, being used to make it be more just a paid time off versus the five days.
Yes, yep.
I mean, I can see where I can definitely.
This policy is very generous on eighteen days a year of sick time, every month and a half, or every month you get a day back.
I think overall, our employee handbook is really good, and I know we overwhelmed this. There's a couple lines in here I'm probably erase, cuz I just think it's too long, but like meal times really. Scratch. Breakfast is from Texas oven for reimbursement.
Isn't that like the ambulance?
I get that has some unions, but to me, that's like really good.
I, yeah, I don't see too much that we wanna change off, I don't think.
We'll keep an eye on the vacation, but, so we're changing the effective date to twenty twenty-four. We do know changes, or we add, and I could reach out to Renee and ask, can we come up with some verbiage for an eval? With department heads at the end of the year, some kind of. And she can add that, I don't think there'll be any added costs, would you guys be open to do an evaluation with the department heads, really only four?
Might be best practice, so, yeah.
I think it really just adds in that, closes that gap of lack of. Cause there is some proposed legislation that a comp board, I don't think it's been signed yet, that that potentially could look different. Board supervisors can decide if they want compensation for it, if it goes away. So, well, I'll reach out to Renee, see if we can get everybody stayed on this, if we change the date, it has to be sent out to everybody, just. Be it email, we don't have to send out paper copies, just that it's updated. If we have something to, we would have a. Any other suggestions or anything you guys want to share? Okay, next item on the agenda is the new organization annual updates.
Digging up stuff out there.
Okay, so first one is Ryan Plucky, section twenty-one, Eden Township, no changes. Then David Plucky, section thirty-three, Eden Township, no changes, and Plucky East, section twenty-three, Eden Township, no changes.
That's the easy one, we're last.
All right, item number two, taking daily reports.
I can go first, last week I went through the walkthrough with my fellow supervisors at the courthouse, um, today I have. Uh, conservation meeting at three-thirty, tomorrow we have board of health meeting at noon, and. That's all I have, I'm sticking to it.
Okay, last week, I also went through the board out, I must spell supervisor, and on Tuesday, we had CCGP. And basically just went around what was going on with every one on the board, what the, uh, their business and stuff, what was going on happening there. And then, uh, Friday was in the, I toured the courthouse with him and, uh, this was. Young lady down there and also. And then I went through the papers also on Friday. And this week I had a CCGP executive board meeting.
Um, last week I had readings from executives, we signed checks, everything's going well, they're. Um, the score report looks good, some of these CDs. I think some of this is confidential, so I can't.
Place in Eastern Iowa, it was, uh, that's, so that revolving a much, where it is that did happen.
And then, uh, their transit, their, the rides are up. Inmates pretty good, there were some really good questions and inquiries from Green County about using. I will present the strays for inmates, just some, some things. Um, what else, approves checks. Certainly, I also had our RDC, uh, meeting, there was two approved loan applications. And then I had the IT meeting with Dalton, and I walked through with my fellow supervisors. And then I also came out here with the conservation for a couple of different meetings, one was the one brought up today, and then there'll be another one. This week I have Wesco, and then I will reach out to tonight, and Wesco, we have our yearly family meeting, so we've had a very. And then I will reach out to Renee and discuss the handbook.
Last week I had. Forum meeting, had a construction progress meeting, which. Then we all did a walk through the courthouse, the basement and the, uh. Ground floor, I had newspaper radio, I did drop off some legal documents to the county attorney. And Tuesday, um. Asked on the coordinator about the balance testing, that three week process that they talked about, she shared that with all the department heads and everybody in courthouse, including. And Jean and I with CCG presentation media invested around dates of the payers and schoolings. And then. There were some questions on order, but the, uh, new auditor staffs being downstairs. On the ground floors recording, I went down and pulled it down. Wednesday I met with Sarah regarding several planning, so any questions coming up and some possible board adjustment. Um, also Wednesday, I signed the application for. EMS, about my grant with Jamie for thirty two hundred dollars. And he discussed recent activities with the ambulance department. And Thursday I went out to Rhodes and looked at their claims, discussed that. Water project, the sack and the driveway issues. And Stephanie and I met with Dalton on the audio visual in the boardroom on Thursday. Friday I looked at courthouse files. And this week, today, they're not going to grinds to the recycle center to look at their optical replying disorder. Tomorrow morning, it's an executive board meeting, that's a recycling center. And Wednesday meeting, Wednesday morning is a recurring instruction meeting. With AD and SDH, and I think I said to him, yes, that means there's not much going on. And another note, um. June thirtieth, we're gonna have an opening on board adjustment that we need to fill. If you know anybody who's living in an incorporated city, you've got that form online, go apply now.
They have to live in unincorporated?
Yeah, you can't live in city limits, you have an accounting for the testament.
Is that the only stipulation?
I think so, by what I read.
It doesn't matter where.
Nope, and then gender balance is no longer a thing. The gal is. The gal who's resigned now lives in Roselle area, who is, um, yeah, she's designing her tire recovery. But, uh, I don't think geographic data is working right, from what I read, but. Something about one year, I don't know, those memories are tough.
Okay, um, let's see, last week I did, um, update the action log. I did the walkthrough of the courthouse, I did review the, um, handbook. And I also set up annual HIPAA training for those who would like it through Gary, that's. Comes with the money that we pay him already, um. That would just be if there are any changes in laws, just a good, it's a good practice.
So is it a refresher from what we did last year in the sheriff's office?
Yes, but I scheduled it here because there wasn't a lot of room last time, and there'll be one at ten o'clock, and there'll be one at one o'clock. And he'll just offer that, and it will probably be a lot of the same, but if there are updates. People, August seventh. Yeah, and so that will keep us in the loop if there are law, you know, changes to laws. And it's a good reminder. Um, and then I have D cat on Thursday at three, and then next week is the meeting, and that's all.
Nothing, nothing in the books yet, so.
There's a motion in a second, anyone discussing?
I did.
Yeah, and. Yeah, I, I, because we've never been. Like, find out where the chart is, so my thing would be just.
Okay, that's, that's from, from a comment last week.
I went to the shooting range on Friday, I think I've held up, Dave Holson's out there. I haven't seen him forever. Yeah, it was, I mean, yeah, it was nice.
How's he doing?
Um. I think it's fine, I would say, yeah. Well, I, I seem like you're more sure of yourself than I was. Hey, I mean, he, he was never real outgoing, but I mean, he was, I mean.